Well, it is 7 o'clock. I'd like to call this the June 27th. The College Place City Council Order. Please, now, would you please say a prayer in the presence of the Lord?
Given my father was thankful for the beautiful day that we had. We're thankful for our city and for those workers, Lord, that did so much of their time and their effort to our town. We ask you to have blessed this meeting and help us to make the decisions that are according to your will. Lord, we thank you for our staff, and we thank you for the men and women of the armed forces that take care of our country. We thank you, and Jesus, thank you.
Amen.
My congratulations to the flag, even the United States of America, and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you notice that the minutes did not-
It is now our time of comment, period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council?
Am I missing something?
It is stepping in like the council to make matters.
I'm sorry, am I missing?
Once again, anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward, say your name.
No, I just moved out for the first time.
John Dowey, 114 Northeast Cedar Avenue.
Sir, could you get a little closer to the microphone?
John Dowey, 114 Northeast Cedar Avenue, College Place. I've got three concerns I have. Sidewalks, there's bushes and stuff growing almost halfway across the sidewalk. Tree branches are coming down, hitting me in the head. They should be seven or eight feet above the sidewalk. Trash cans, I don't think trash cans should be on the sidewalk, only on pickup day, not all week long. And signage, some of the branches are covering up street signs, and they're hard to find. And some of the stop signs are blocked. You don't see them soon enough. So those are my three main concerns.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the City Council?
I think this is for today's agenda.
Saying none, we have a consent agenda. We approved the City Council minutes from June 13th, approved the appointment of the Historic Preservation Commission. We approved the Walla Walla County All Hazard Re-trailing Agreement, and approved the Consent Agenda.
I have to go back.
I believe that we approved the Consent Agenda with the change of the item number three moved down to the bottom. Item number three, 3.06, which is-
Are you talking about 6.03?
6.03.
Okay.
That it?
Yeah.
Well, it's-
Under action.
Yeah. Yeah, 6.03. Yeah.
Requested that we move item 6.03 to just beyond 6.07. It's been moved in second here. We need to spur the discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, don't sign. Motion passes the unanimous vote. We have two proclamations this evening, and they're quite lengthy. The first one is a proclamation of appreciation to William P. Kelly for his 40 years of service in the City of College Place. For as William P. "Bill" Kelly began his career with the City of College Place Police Department in 1976, just one month after his discharge from serving four years in the United States Air Force, his first year as an officer was made possible through a conference of employment and training that Grant the City had received for one year. After that year ended, the city decided to fund a position and keep him on, a parent actor for which I'm entirely agree. His first chief was Wayne King. However, Bill is quite familiar with the department already. His father was the first leader of the police department, given the title of police chief before him. All had been town marshals. In addition to his father being chief during Bill's youth, his mother was for the city as a dispatcher. And after Bill became an officer, his sister was hired as a dispatcher for the City of College Place and later for the Wawa Free Water Department. In addition, his brother served as his new officer. It was no surprise to hear him say he never had the desire to be anything other than a college police team at his age. And for as Bill has undergone many hours of training, acquiring professional certifications in a multitude of law enforcement subjects, he has shared his knowledge with others in the department, serving as a training officer various times. He's been involved in several teams throughout his career, and says to highlight of his years serving the department, he's been a member of the SWAT team. In the past, he has been honored by the Walla Walla County Traffic Safety DUI Task Force as the DUI Enforcement Officer of the Year, and was recently honored by the DFW as the Officer of the Year for 2016. And whereas, in addition to serving in the City of College Place as a police officer, Bill was also an active member of the College Place Fire Volunteer Fire Department. Several years ago, he was performing his police duties directing traffic at a fire at Highland Drive, when in conversation with the fire chief, the chief noticed that he could really use an additional volunteers. Bill, Bill's time in the Air Force lands perfectly in this as a work crash rescue for the United States Air Force, which involved fire suppression and various other aspects relating to firefighting. The city is very fortunate to have someone so dedicated to service in this community. And now, therefore, this council and mayor of the City of College Place does hereby confer upon William P. Kelly this high commendation for the manner in which he's performed his duties with the City of College Place Police Department, with special thanks for his 40 years of professionalism, dedication, and service to the community. Day 27th of June 2017. Officer Kelly, would you please come forward? And a piece of wall.
Thank you.
Please, you may address the council and the audience.
Thank you.
Not much to give in speeches, but I can just say the 40 years, it's been a challenge both professionally and personally. And I guess this way to sum it up is, we had a sign out at the entrance to the city, I think it was on Rose Street, and it said, "College Place." Correct me if I'm wrong, but it said, "A place to call home." Well, that's how I look at it. And that's how I still look at it, because probably I'm concerned, we were family, we were kin, and that's how I approach it. And so, thank you.
And I have a proclamation of appreciation to Paul Hartley for his 40 years of service to the City of College Place. For as Paul Hartley began his career with the City of College Place on June 27, 1977, with a part-time position in public works right after college, with the plan to begin the University of Washington Sports Medicine Program later that year. After several months working part-time, a full-time position as a garbage man came open to the city, and he decided to stay on. Paul worked as the garbage man for about a year until the position opened in the water department, and he transitioned there. When the street supervisor retired, Paul was selected for that position. Sometime later, water supervisor retired, and Paul was again selected to fill that position. In 1988, he was promoted to the position of Public Court Superintendent, and then promoted to Public Court's Director, or former Director, Lord, he's retired, and is serving the city in that capacity still today. For as Paul holds the following professional certifications: Water Distribution Manager IV, Cross-Connection Control Specialist, Wastewater Collections. One, he represents the City of the individuals and organizations throughout the state. He was a original member of the local Utility Coordination Council, serving as president in that organization for several years. He has shared his expertise by teaching water classes to Water Environment and Training Resource Center all over Washington State. Currently, he holds a seat on the Board of Directors for the Evergreen Rural Water of Washington. And for as over the past 40 years, Paul has been an integral part of many projects that have improved the quality of life in College Place. Projects such as construction of two wastewater treatment plants, the Southern Distribution Water Route Project, which made the Walmart development possible, the Intertie Projects with Walla Walla College, now Walla Walla University, the local water districts and the City of Walla Walla, the Hojibo Development, the East Side Water Storage Project, multiple large water main and infrastructure projects, and most recently, the Cars Project. In addition, he has implemented the automated water meter meeting system to help reduce labor hours and increase efficiency. For as he has worked with 10 different mayors, beginning with his own father, an abundant number of council members, and a great number of city staff. He has been the head of the Public Works Department long enough that nearly all the current employees in that department were hired by him. He said that working with the great city staff and citizens in College Place is the reasoning of the state for such a long time. He has had, and we hope will continue, that lasting impact on the life of the City of College Place. And now, therefore, this council and mayor of the City of College Place does hereby confer upon Paul Hartley this high commendation for the manner in which he's performed his duties with the City of College Place Public Works Department, with special thanks for his 40 years of professionalism, dedication, and service to this community. Day 27th of June 2017. I can't think of a more appropriate 40 anniversary to bring Paul forward. Thank you. Thank you. If you'd like to address the council and the audience, please do so.
I've considered it a privilege, not a right, to work for the City of College Place. I feel real fortunate. I can't take credit on my own, because I was developed by other people, I've been supported by other people. At first, I have to thank the people that worked under me. They've been such good people, and I have to, I'm proud of them. They've done excellent jobs. And again, I thank the administrators, the support team, the council, and the leadership team. They've always been a willing and encouraging partner in the work that I do. I couldn't do it without everybody. And I think it's just a privilege to be able to be an employee of the City of College Place. Thank you.
It's Kildore. We have preliminary recommendations for the wastewater report.
Good evening. Is this on? Is this on? Anyway, um, so I am before you tonight again to introduce Angie Sanchez from FCS Group, who's the principal in charge of our wastewater rate study this year. Also did our water rate study last year. This evening, she's going to present the preliminary results of their study, and go through a couple of different alternatives with you guys, and be looking for some feedback. So with that, Angie, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Can you everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, getting to everybody, as Sarah had mentioned, we were essentially before you on June 13th, talking about the overall rate setting process, and you know, whether it was kind of methodology, and overview of what these studies entails in terms of the wastewater rate study, and also where they were able to receive some, you know, counsel input in terms of issues or questions or sensitivities that you may all have that we should bring forward tonight. And so, the main focus of this evening is on the initial results. And again, this is for the monthly fees that we charge. The connection charges will be coming at a later date. And so, we'll focus on what are the overall revenue requirements of the particular utility, and then what are some of the great options that we may have available to us in order to be able to meet some of those obligations. And then obviously, open it up to questions and discussion, and talk a little bit about the next steps. So the first couple of slides, probably for three slides, are going to be overview. I'm going to go through them fairly quickly, because they were presented in the new workshop. But as you'll recall, the overall six components include the operating cost, and what is the appropriate fee that needs to be set to meet all of your operating costs. Separate from that, we look at your debt cost and obligations, and identify what fee needs to be established for your debt and your capital type of cost. And then we look at capital funding, a little bit separately, it's interrelated, as you can see with the, or with the business. But we do look at capital costs independently, because as you'll see, there's a number of peaks and valleys in your annual capital and profit project plan, and we want it to keep that ultimately at a rate, a long rate to be consistent, but we still need to fund these various different obligations. And then again, obviously, want to look at funds now. The rule of our requirement, again, briefly, is we're presented with a multi-year financial plan, and focused on, you know, the first probably six years of that financial plan. We want to determine our overall revenue needs to meet this particular utility's overall financial obligations, and make sure that it is self-sufficient in terms of the utility rates that are being charged, so not only current indirect and indirect type of costs and physical policies. We want to evaluate the current rates on a seasonal basis, and then develop an annual rate implementation strategy, if those particular rates are not positioned to cover your needs, and will get hold of that incidentally for operating rate and the debt service capital fee. And here, again, we talked a little bit generically last time, and now we've built it in terms of the specifics here. Utility physical policies for the wastewater utility, we've broken down into four areas. The operating reserve, we're looking at trying to maintain a 50-day operating blood balance with the 50 days of operating maintenance costs. That raises up to around $410,000 per year. We are looking at capital contingency reserves of about $500,000. Now, that is a soft target, so as in any given year, if we're not necessarily meeting that, or those zeros, we might be okay with that if we're building reserves over time. But again, that's more of a contingency savings account for particular utilities for any type of emergency repairs. We have to determine our placement funding, which is key, and what we talked a lot about in terms of water utility, and we'll continue to talk about in terms of wastewater utility, is reinvesting in the system for those particular assets that are becoming worn out and off lease. We are building two across million, million dollars, and we're not getting to that in the time period that we're looking at. We're actually going to be starting at about $100,000, very similarly for the water utility, and building it by $100,000 each year. So we're actually getting to probably about $500,000 for the time period we're looking at. And then debt service coverage requirement is important, because it maintains our credit worthiness, and it waits for check from lawholders. And so, we're again looking at minimum requirement of 1.25 coverage, but our physical policy target is about 1.5 coverage. We don't want to be so close to the line, that if you had anything come up, and it would push us over, and that we would not be able to meet our requirements from lawholders for our fee. So now, we'll get into more specifics in terms of the wastewater facility, and some of the assumptions and key factors that we use before we present those numbers. So we're looking at the multi-year time period, period of the long-term 20-year plan, but the focus is on the initial 50-year period of 2017 through 2022. We are using the approved 2017 operating budget as a baseline for expenses, but we did go through with staff to make sure that any of those line items were not one-time expenses that we need to adjust for the future. So we were very cognizant about making sure to, make sure that they're actually continuing on an appropriate level. We have account growth at 1%. We did use that for similarly for the water utility. That represents about 42 new customers per year, and that's really new customer kind of residential equivalent in terms of those tax things and numbers that you're looking at there. And the business is that your existing debt service, right now, is about $583,000 in 2017, but as you'll see, over time, it is reducing, and there's debt that has fallen off in 2019, '21, '22, and actually ends in 2023. And so, that's the business that we look at into the future in terms of, you know, what kind of rate support, and the need for that capital funding over in the future, how we might be able to balance those particular needs to admit at larger impacts. So talking specifically a little bit more about capital cost, capital is that significant cost on the utility. We wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about what are the assumptions in terms of capital that we're using here. And so, we're looking at about 1.9 million in capital cost from 2017 through '22. Now, here is the graphic on this particular slide here, that shows on annual basis what our overall capital cost obligations look like. And you can see, there's, you know, peaks and valleys in terms of these particular capital costs, and that's why we try to look at that independently from our rates, but those types of funders, because we don't want our rates to take these peaks and valleys. We want to be able to, you know, have our rates set at a consistent debt level. What we're looking at in terms of the capital cost, as you see there, are annual replacements, essentially, in terms of the wastewater utility collection. So there's not a lot, they're acting, no wastewater treatment plan improvement, our facility, because we are undergoing that wastewater treatment plan facility plan, which should give us a better indication of what those future needs may be in terms of the treatment plan. So that is key to remember as we're looking at these costs, that it is likely that that facility plan may come up with additional capital items that we may be needing in the future. So this really does focus on annual replacement costs for the collection system. Now, we do have capital funding resources available to us, and that's what you see in the price chart here, is that we have available cash from, you know, cash resources by 12%, that will be into the fund balances that we have. We're looking at, again, trying to fund some level of capital in our rate, including system reinvestment funding, so every year, how much can we fund core capital through our rates, without getting out of debt. We have equipment funding from our annual transfers for our equipment replacement funds. We have connection charges from new customers connecting to the system. And then we have fairly significant amount, about 47%, coming from our debt capital fee that's available to help fund not only our debt service and obligations, but is, has been transferred to help out in terms of our overall annual capital cost. So for these particular annual capital costs, these are the resources that we're trying to optimize in order to meet those various different obligations. And the business is, in these particular scenarios that you'll be seeing, is that we have not assumed that there will be additional debt at this time for the collection replacement costs. So now, we're going to bring it all together in this graphic, and this is, I'll point out what the border line means, because there's a little bit going on here. So this is for the operating revenue requirement. So remember, you have operating and your debt, and so this is strictly the operating fee that we're looking at. What you'll see in the shading here is your operating plan and your balance, and then it is a minimum balance. And so, essentially, we're keeping your operating plan balance, and making sure that we're meeting the minimum requirement, so that's my sound, in 50 days. And so, that is represented in this shading, but the bars are operating then, is your operating expenses. And so, the dark navy bars show in 2017 through 2022, what our overall operating expenses look like. Now, you can see that in 2017 to 2018, it does decrease slightly, and that is because there are the one-time ability plan costs in 2017, that's maybe kind of a little higher, and so we make sure not to continue that in the future, because you don't have to do that every year, and so it is dropping slightly. Then we have the bars that you see there in green or orange, or I think it's green. Sorry, I do have to mention that we did adjust this particular graphic in your particular slide, it might be a little higher, what you're looking at, we will give you this new slide. In this particular analysis, what we looked at is slowly phasing in through some reinvestment funding at about $100,000 per year, starting in 2018. So there's $100,000, $200,000, $300,000, as we continue on our path to try to increase rate funding for capital. And so, that is represented by the green bars. As you can see in your particular slide, they're a little higher, we're trying to probably spend about $500,000 capital cost, which is getting too costly, so we decided to save it in more slowly. What you see on the solid line is your existing rate revenue. So this is if we absolutely did no rate increase, what cost could lie ongoing existing rates cover of my obligations. And so, as you can see, in 2017, we're not currently meeting, are able to meet our annual obligations with the amount of revenue that is coming in from this particular fee. And so, we are having to use fund balance of about $400,000 in that particular year. Now, as we go out over time, and attempt to begin to start funding our capital requirements and needs, we can do that again, and that deficiency now becomes greater as we move up over time. So there is some type of rate adjustment that is required, which is represented in the dotted line. In the table, the numbers that are written on that dotted line essentially identify that for residential monthly bill, with a residential customer needing about $9,000 gallons per month, their existing bill is about $48, $49. In order to get to this, again, this dotted kind of graph, the proposal, we would need about $10.57 increase in the existing rate in order to meet those particular needs in 2018, so that's about 22% increase. Following that, we would need an additional 10% or about $6 increase in 2019, and then it stabilized a bit more until about $3.25 to $3.50 per year after that. And so, the main impediment for that is, we're needing to fund our overall deficiency that we currently have today, because we're not meeting our operating costs as we stand. And then as we begin to try to fund some of our capital needs, our deficiency is increasing, so we need to make up that particular deficiency in order to fund any type of capital obligations that we have. And so, you can see this is your existing revenue, this dollar line, this is the revenue that we're intending to try to get to meet the particular needs in order to meet those obligations for the operating fee. Now, we push over, and the debt service requirement, and that's N S B and the capital fee. It's an interesting situation that's happening here, and so currently, you're charging $15 for a typical residential customer for this charge that covers debt services and capital. What is happening here, as you can see, is this is the amount of revenue in this kind of green dotted line here, this is the amount of revenue that we have coming in from this charge annually. We then see that for the bars, this is our annual existing debt service obligation, and as we talked about previously, our debt is actually beginning to fall off as we let over time, from our issues are getting paid off. And so, for 2017 and '18, we're still at a fairly significant level, but in 2019, we start robbing our debt obligations, because our debt obligations are not being retired. What that does for us is it means that we now have, from that particular fee, funding available, because we are no longer having to pay the annual debt obligation. But in addition, the requirement that we have to keep a certain level of debt, or excuse me, certain level of reserve funding, and in particular, reserve, also falls off, because again, our debt is being retired. And so, now, we have a gap here, where we're actually generating additional revenue that we have available to fund some of our capital needs. So that's the good news about the debt service requirement fund. And so, all of our debt service ends in 2022. It does look like our annual debt service obligations are below the revenue collected from the fee, as we let over time, and there's gas here. And the revenue above the debt service payment is being transferred to the capital fund, so that's kind of how you operate today, and what we look like. So if we test this, but whole, we would say that at $15, again, you pay that the debt service obligation verse, needs to maintain its required minimum fund balance for our requirements. But then after that, access is able to be transferred to the capital fund for capital funding. So what we see here is that there would be no fee for any increase in terms of that particular debt service fee, with this $15.
Angie, this is Lauren Peterson. I have a question. Is the excess on this example that you're showing right now, is this standalone right now, or has this been moved over? Has any of this been moved over to the previous slide?
For the operating?
Yes.
No. So currently, it's strictly making those particular obligations standalone. So the operating has to cover the operating, and then debt capital, that needs to cover the debt capital needs.
Okay, thank you.
And so, we'll get into that, because that's a great question. And so, bringing that, those items together, so the total bill really- And so bringing that, those items together, so the total bill really does look at, you know, what is the operating plus the debt capital fee so that we can then identify what our total residential bill impact would be. Again, to that same residence of $9,000 per month. And so your operating rate and your debt capital fee is here for 48, 49, 16, so about 54, 49. With the adjustments that we had just talked about, what those particular charges would run to is the W515, 81, 84, 87, 91. So you can see the effective increase is lower than the operating increase because the debt service fee is the same, the operating is going to need to increase. So in total, you have a lower effective rate increase for that particular customer impact. And you can kind of see the differences there. It was similar, the same chart, which would be about $10.57 here, about $6 here, and about 3.50 around any particular year. Okay. So now the question brought up exactly what this particular scenario is that said, well, there seems to be an issue in terms of how we're, we're looking at it. And it's not, you know, it's not an error. It's just strictly our costs are changing in terms of what is driving those particular overall fees and the needs of these. And so we created an alternative scenario with all staff to address the disconnection between the debt rate revenue decreasing and the debt service payments. And so now we have this increasing overall revenue within the debt service fund. That's staying within the debt service fund, but yet we have this overall need in the operating fund. And can we do anything about that? And so what we look at is if we maintain these $15 debt capital fees and then we use the excess debt capital fee to cover operating needs as well as we need as much capital requirement as possible. And so we said, you know, what can we do is now we also look at covering some of that with operating needs. So that was a great question in terms of what was coming up next. And then also building this capital reserve over time without driving rates. So that would allow us to do that, so again, try to minimize that operating deficiency and any excess of, so that we can be going to those capital reserves as much as possible. Because again, we do not know what's going to be coming up in the wastewater treatment facility plan. And so similarly, what you see here is a similar chart in terms of what are these particular, you know, bars, what are the operating costs? The main difficulty doesn't change a whole lot. What seems from the last page, what was in green is now orange and that represents the broken available capital funding. What you'll notice is it's not very consistent in terms of what the previous chart was because the previous operating funds were, you know, really tried to consistently say we want to be funding a certain amount every year for some reinvestment by $100,000 increase per year. What this is looking at is saying, well, what do I have available in those particular, in excess revenue in that particular debt service fund that can help me fund these particular capital needs that I have? And well, it minimizes my operating deficiency. And so when the larger debt is pretty, debt service falls off in 2019, you can see that now we have more funds available for capital funding. And then we have less, less need to increase our revenue beyond what that particular revenue is allowing us to generate. And so our increase becomes smaller. So if there's a 22% increase, now we're looking at a 10% increase. And similarly, it kind of carries out over time is that we now have, instead of a, what we have here, instead of that 5% or about a 10% increase, I believe, we now have a lower for debt increase over time in the order to, again, use the existing debt reserve excess revenue to help us meet some of our operating costs. That does really is the key there. And the difference is that we're no longer needing to keep them necessarily in the debt service capital fund. We can use them to help fund some of our operating costs and then it goes to the capital fund. And so instead of, again, $10.57, what we see in terms of a residential monthly bill impact would be 45, all by 2057, $1.80, $1.73, and $1.78. So again, it's stabilized out here once we head out. But the initial increase is to meet our overall operating deficiency. We still have to take a bit of a, a little bit of a jump there in the 2018 time period. But this kind of helps us really divert some of that excess revenue to help us meet our operating deficiency in the initial year. Okay? And so similarly, this is really set a similar chart. We're keeping the $15, except that what we're looking at is again, diverting some of that $15 that is no longer needed to fund the level of debt service in 2019 because it's dropping off. We're diverting a part of it to the operating fund to help meet those overall obligations. And again, and the excess is transferred to the, to the operating fund and those capital reserves as they are available. And so the alternative customer impact, we put those two things all together. Again, we have our existing rate here at about 54, 49. 2018, it goes to 59, 72, 73, 75, and 77 as we look out over time. So the effective rate, our goal is 10%, but because we're keeping the 15 the same, effectively the rate would be about 7.5% increase. And then well, by smaller increases as we go out over time. So let's maybe stop there real quick and any questions up to this particular point?
Michelle?
So it, I, it looks to me that probably somewhere around 2020-ish, we'll be needing to actually start on our construction, our design and construction of an updated plant. And so it looks like there potentially would be room there for that to happen without jumping up a huge amount on rates. Is that, I'm looking at the second alternative?
Right. And so that's exactly kind of what is, what is happening is that we are, again, using as much as we can to cover our operating costs, to move that operating cost impact out, delete, you know, the rate increases in order to do that. But we're all, we're allowing that $15 to stay in place because we do anticipate that there are likely future capital obligations coming up. And so if we can begin kind of accumulating a little bit of capital reserve, then that will help offset any future requirements that we foresee in the wastewater treatment facility plan.
Mr. Parker, is that a pretty fair assumption?
Mr. Peterson? Lauren here. So I think coupled to your question is there's a $1.9 million amount that's listed for capital expenditures. Is that correct in looking into the future? Is that, so the new treatment plant is not a part of that, obviously. It's more than that. Is there, and I'm thinking, I may be getting the carpe for the horse here. Is there, do we have a listing yet of capital expenditures that are being requested that support that 1.9 million?
In terms of specific capital projects?
Yes. And that may not be available at this time, and that's okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, that's just based, that's just based on looking at replacement costs for our whole system over time. And what it takes to build them or how long, we have about a third older pipe that is migrating really quickly. A third is migrating a little bit less quickly than a third that's probably going to be good for a long time. So we base it on that general assumption of replacement costs. That's what it takes to replace it over time as it goes bad.
Okay, but based on that estimate or, yeah, based on historical, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
See, now, four years. Okay. And so there's a couple bars left. When we had talked in on June 13th, there were a couple of questions related to kind of some information that individuals, homeowners would like to know. One of them being the current low-income subsidy. And so I wanted to touch base with you on that quickly and let you know that in terms of the subsidy code is we have referenced here. And so that low-income customers are eligible to receive a 20% discount on rates. Now they do have to provide satisfactory proof that, you know, they meet the requirements of, you know, being 55 years of age or older or being disabled. And then they have to have a maximum annual household income at or below 125% of the federal poverty guidelines. And so, you know, there is some proof that goes along with that. But if they do receive the discount, it would be about, it's up to about 20% discount on the rate. We did go back and look at the customer statistics that we were providing and it was, here there was a lot of customers that paid a discounted rate. And so if we kind of looked at those 11 customers, what they would pay under the full rate versus whether they're paying under the subsidy rate, it's about a difference of a buck and a $27 per month.
In total?
In total. Okay. And then the other question that came out was a discussion on different alternative rate designs in terms of maybe changing the allowance. We did go back and look at that and we do not currently have the necessary information or withhold the necessary information from the billing system to be able to run those alternatives. So that is something that we can kind of put in terms of the future needs. But with the existing information we have, we could not provide that level of detailed alternative.
Michelle?
Do we have any demographic information from cities that we're helping us grow in? 11 seems really low to me, but I don't really know. So is this, do we need to advertise this better? Or are our citizens just more prosperous than I thought they were? I don't, I mean, I don't expect that you would have this, I'm asking you.
Well, I, I think the issue is, is that we probably can do a better job of advertising. Certainly, you know, given, given the data, statistical data that we've got, you would think that if you got more than 11 out of the almost 10,000 people that were here, this was a hell of a...
I just wanted to add, because I'm putting together some data points for Economic Development Commission tomorrow night. It's like a data snapshot where we're at. And our poverty rate as of 2015 was around 17%. So I do think there is some discrepancy in there.
Yeah, it's been working with a number of different jurisdictions. This is a very difficult demographic to reach. Absolutely, you know, the more that it can be advertised, the better. But even those who have very serious programs and who, you know, actually staff it with an FTE, go out into the community, really do not see very high participation rates. And so it's just kind of a phenomenon that, you know, maybe people don't want to, you know, do that in terms of pride issue or other reasons. But it's a very difficult demographic to try to increase. The average is probably about 3% to 4% participation rate that we see.
Mr. Peterson? Okay, so I know who makes up the difference with low-income property tax owners. Who makes up the difference for low-income utility rate customers?
So this particular time would be everybody.
So the city? This is, this is current?
The right here.
Mike, here's a quick question. Your, your percentage was for a 1.0 poverty?
No, it was around 17%.
70%, but that would be a baseline poverty. So this is based on 125% of the poverty of the federal level. Is it 70% of?
That, that's...
That would be 1.0?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's for 2015 ACS.
I see, okay. Because I'm thinking that 125 is tapping it, the 1.25 maybe tapping it down somewhat. That's a very low threshold, but yeah, okay.
And so? Well, and just to make sure it's clear in my mind, that 17% of people of all ages, whereas the discount applies to senior citizens or disabled.
Right.
Correct, the 17% from the data that I pulled, that was above the age of 16.
Other questions?
I'm a little bit curious here is if we were able to better advertise this thing, how would that, what sort of increases would be expected from that? That overall weight here? Would it have a disproportionate impact? Maybe it would increase the, well, it would be, like, be purple or blue today. I don't know what we would expect in terms of how this would affect if we did better.
So Mike, these are complex issues because you could have a landlord that is renting a building that may be paying utilities, but is not qualified for this. But your population analysis may include that renter, correct?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of ways, ways to slice this data, especially with the age strat, you know, kind of area. Yeah, you could get down, you could do, 11 does seem very, very low, but...
And I just wanted to add about the question about advertising and what would happen. We faced a similar issue in Callfax and then we started to advertise it within Giza, social media, all over places. We had a grand total of an additional four people signing up. So, I mean, hopefully it would be different here, but we advertised it heavily and it was just an additional four.
I would also like to add that those 11 participants are actually very difficult to get to participate. We have to encourage them and remind them, send letters and, you know, I mean, it's, it's well into the year before we finally get them to get all their paperwork done and their application. So it's just a tough, a tough group to work with.
So two questions. So do they have to re-up this every year?
Yes.
That, that might, I, I might encourage us to maybe, say, every five years or 10 years? Because usually once you're in that, you're a senior citizen or a disabled person with this kind of income, it's pretty rare that you suddenly get more income.
Or undisable.
Or undisable or younger. But the other question that I had is, do we put information about it when we send out late notices? Seems like that would be the target demographic is people who are paid bills.
Sharon?
No, not with the late notice since we put a notice in the newsletter from time to time. But not with the late notice.
Just for information purposes on the county, if you're a senior and you require, has a low income, has a property tax, they require you to reapply every three years.
That might be a reason to do it all together.
Those 11 people? Honestly, they'd save a little time if they were reapplying every year. Someone's going to have to go through the paperwork.
And then the first year that you have to reapply, the second year every year for a couple of years. Then once you get on the system and you get going and you're showing your predictability, then you put it on every three years. So it's kind of a sliding scale.
Any other questions? Back to you.
Okay. And so with what we presented, essentially we wanted to get some feedback. And so if we recall on page eight and 12, essentially are the two main alternatives because we're thinking about not changing the debt service fee. So that would stay at $15 currently for both of the alternatives that were presented. The original, page eight, operating revenue requirement essentially holds each of those particular funds and basically maintains that they're self-sustaining. So no using the, you know, debt capital fee to pay for any operating cost. Everything stays within the debt service fund and just accumulates over time for cap, future capital needs. What the alternative does is allow for some of that excess revenue from the lower debt obligations to be used for operating deficiency for the initial time period. And then it basically accumulates into the, into the capital reserve. And so it's a little different. The alternative is in terms of what you're doing today. So it's again, basically allowing that some of that debt service revenue could be used to offset operating costs. And so that's really the main difference between the alternatives. But it does have an effect because it can, you know, change from a $10.57 increase in 2018 to $4.85 in 2018, depending on the alternative. Any thoughts on those two?
Michelle?
I, I would definitely prefer the second option. I don't see the point in, I, I don't like the giant increase. I think that's too much of a shock to the system. I just do want to make sure that we double check that there's nothing requiring us to only use that for debt service and capital. So we are, you know, legally can put that into operating needs. I assume now you can, but I don't like the zoom in.
Well, if we can, we just can move the $1 now over to the other column and call it good. You know, actually, when I look through this, I'm very encouraged. I, this was a rock we hadn't looked under before, like one of the last ones. And to see the last analysis as you, you see that smaller percentage over year over year is, is, is very, I think... year is, is, is very, I think, encouraging. Uh, we didn't know and that's, um, yeah. Very good analysis. Thank you.
Other questions in conference?
Seeing that, I think the, the, the alternative is that the third option has had a gender consensus.
Thank you very much, Angie.
Yeah, and so it sounds like several will likely be coming back to you all on July 25th. And, uh, we will be coming back after that time, uh, once we get the connection charge analysis completed, uh, we'll be able to present that particular update to you all as well.
Thank you so very much.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
So, public hearing. Transportation Improvement Plan six-year, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you. Give me one moment here. And this is it here. Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, something that we brought to, uh, council last meeting on the 13th. Um, you've seen this before. This is a, an event we see annually. We have to go and, yeah, provide a public hearing for our transportation, transportation improvement plan. And then the vote, council has the option to approve or not approve. The glitch here is, is that it's state law that we have to have one and we have to approve one. And a lot of our funding is based upon that approval. So you haven't seen a lot of change in this over the last few years. And, and I know you've seen this already, but for the purposes of the hearing, I'll go through some of this again for the, to the public. But the way we have it broken up is we, we do list our current project, which is our cars project. And we have a six-year category, which is technically our six-year transportation improvement plan. But what we do is we also include a 10-year, uh, section as well as a long-term demo, down-the-road section for the plan. And if funding were to come up and were to be available, we might, at the staff level, just promote one of these up into, uh, our six-year plan so we can take advantage of available funding. So that's part of the way we structure this. Every single one of these projects includes a pedestrian component if funds are available. And so we also cover our leases that way. Because again, if we don't have this on our plan, we often are not able to apply for funding for it from either the state or from federal sources. So that's important. Uh, I did want to point out, as we go through this, um, that these numbers here are a little perhaps lower than they should be. We're already seeing construction costs increasing, up through, uh, 2019, they're pretty accurate. But, um, we are seeing construction costs increase. And the dilemma here is, is that we are only about halfway through the impact of initiative 695, number 2 million back in 99, cut our vehicle tab, um, taxes and so forth. And that was our local funding source. And that's no longer there. Uh, that was about 20 years ago. A road lasts typically with good maintenance about 40 years. Okay, we got 70 years out of College Avenue, but you guys, you, the council saw what condition that was in. That doesn't work for roads in general. So what we're gonna be saying is, as we go through this, right now, most of our existing current plant, uh, projects coming up, for example, 2018 will be 4th Street and Academy Way for Fortunate. And then in 2019, we're looking at C Street. And Cedar and Damsel, we have the funding for that as well. But as we move through those projects, we're gonna be getting more and more into local roads. And we do not have the same funding sources for those because they're not federally classified. So although we, this is maybe a little bit of an aside for tonight, over time, we're gonna have to be looking more carefully at how we take care of our local roads and how we fund those. Um, the Transportation Benefit District is one of those, um, things that we're looking at. But the reality is, is that the cost for local road improvement far strips our, our capacities. And so we're gonna be looking at not only additional funding, but relying very heavily on chip ceiling probably, and maybe even looking at possibly reducing the amount of actual road surface that we're responsible over time. That's a conversation we'll have to have later on. Uh, we are doing a stormwater study, which may come into that because that has to do with maybe different road sections, which we need to increase the amount of asphalt we need. Uh, but just be aware that, um, we'll be looking more and more down the road here at local roads, not just our federally classified roads. But this is what we have for today. Um, and I think we mentioned these already, the six, 10, and long-term project candidates with the pedestrian facility component. And then this is the chip seal program. In the darker gray up on the screen, you'll see is, and I don't know why I have this up here still. I apologize. Oops. Just think if I go like this, like this. Here we are. This section up here, these are existing current, um, projects for this year. Um, and I believe they're gonna be getting started if they're not already started.
We're hoping, uh, Wednesday, I mean, Wednesday, I would be forward.
Okay, so very timely. Not quite yet, but we're getting there. And then these are the ones that we have set up for the next six years. Um, we are funding, based on what I've been able to look at so far, we're only actually funding about, um, I think it's about a quarter, or I should say actually completing about a quarter, but what it would take to do the whole city every eight years, which is about as long as a chip seal lasts. Okay? So just so you know, that's, that's coming up. Um, and again, once we're done with the hearing here, uh, as the mayor presides over that, closes that, and another action item or two, you'll be asked to revisit this. We probably won't go through a lot of explanation, just ask you to vote on or to approve or disapprove of. So I think that's all I have on this sort of questions.
Uh, the, the chip seal, are we still working with the county?
Yes.
Are we in a relationship with them?
Yeah, we have a good relationship with them.
And they supply?
Yes, okay. They, they supply, you know, material, uh, the oil, the equipment, the power, and we, we substitute in our, our coal.
That's right. Okay. Yeah, thanks for reminding me. It's good.
Is the list, the order of the list by the need for repair or by available utility funding?
It's kind of a, uh, both. Um, for example, on the six-year plan, we think we're gonna get, we have funding in hand for, uh, 4th Street and Academy Way right now. We'd like to be able to make up the difference to go do the project. Um, so that's, that's right there. And that's why C Street's actually behind that. I guess if we had our brother C Street, we'd go first, maybe. But that's, we got the funding pot developed.
Again, making more Damsel and Cedar and so on.
And those, those we don't really, those are local funded projects. And the reason those are on the list is because they come right off of C Street and we design them as a part of it because it made sense to do that. So the intent is to try and fund those if we have monies, but we might not. And they may have to select.
But we may have other words, need, we've got words.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Yes, funding, funding to date. That and the need for utility repairs that, that kind of coincide with the road improvements are the driver for how they select, I guess.
And all the need for repair. So, so if C Street doesn't actually look at, we know that it has four waters. Is this subject to change?
In terms of C Street?
During the next six years?
Um, whether you mean...
Well, let's say, let's say could we reorder this, if we didn't get, 24C, didn't look like it's viable project, could we change the order of the, of the Damsel and Cedar again?
Yes. And we would do that. And of course, we keep you informed as we went through that process and the contracts that come before you. We think it's very flexible. Um, and that's why, although it's a six-year plan, we've got all these long-term plans that for some reason, if we run across good funding for it, we'll jump on it. Um, we do chase the money.
So this plan is amended every year?
Yes, it is. Every year. And we do have to have it approved again, um, by the 30th incentive statement, so.
Any further questions here, Mr. Gordon? Uh, to open the public hearing for the transportation, the six-year transportation group plan, do you mind wishing to testify for against the step forward as state attorney Madras? And once again, the motion to testify for against the, uh, transportation group of the, instead of water station, you may address, and one by the time you wish to testify for this. The six-year transportation group of the plan, instead of water station, you may address. Seeing then, I accept the motion to close the public hearing. It's been, it's been moved by this side and accepted by the same side. And in favor, okay, we can respect. And in favor, please signify the same.
Aye.
Close the same sign. If it is supported. I don't see Chief Witter, he is, uh, on his process here.
Chief Morris. Uh, Chief Witter asked me to be his proxy for the fireworks. And I just, as a reminder, his vocal perspect, perspective, the agenda bill was presented as an administrative report at the last council meeting where it was recommended by council to bring back as an action item with recommended changes. Uh, his vocal perspective is currently part of our Latin city. The days have been shortened in the past to July 1st, noon, on the 5th of July, and New Year's. Motion to, a recommended action is motion to approve ordinance number 17-024, repealing and replacing college placement, code chapter 8.08 fireworks in Skyline Insurance.
Those include the years? Was that correctly?
You're not allowed to ask me questions.
Yes, you're the proxy.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry. And I think there was a revision here about taking some of their money and giving it to the police department, too.
I, I agree with that.
We're not gonna argue with you.
Unless I miss that part.
For you don't. I would, I would move to approve ordinance number 17-024, repealing and replacing college placement, code chapter 8.08 fireworks in Skyline.
It's been moved by this side. Same side, everyone's, Ms. Hilton, any further discussion? And in favor, please signify the same.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion passes again, listen. Mr. Gordon, back to you, six-year transportation improvement plan.
Okay, this is exactly the same thing you just saw. Um, we just had before the adoption of the plan, as was presented earlier before the hearing. Um, if there are any further questions, I can entertain those.
I'll move to approve resolution number 17-022, adopting the cities 2018 to 2023, six-year transportation improvement plan.
Second. By Ms. Hilton, instead of, uh, this is father, any further discussion? Seeing then, all in favor, please signify by the same.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion passes again, listen. As no difference, I'm just going down to 6.0, full revenue bond, specific order.
So as part of the 2017 budget, um, we had, uh, $2 million revenue bond issuance in the water fund. And that was to fund some of the capital projects that are coming up in the near future, such as the C Street water infrastructure, um, a couple other, some line replacements. And also, um, we have possibly even a greater need if, if we are at some point successful in finding some water rights that we want to purchase. Um, we need to be kind of planning for that, too. So, um, I'm just coming before you this evening to ask for permission to, um, advertise for an RFP for bonding.
Questions for this hearing?
Um, I just went to a presentation on, um, funding at, um, the AWC Annual Conference, which managed to terrify me entirely. So, um, forgive me for questions. Um, so do we have an attorney that works with us on the bonding? Is that our city attorney or is that a separate attorney?
No, we, we've worked with Jeff Nave in half, says our bond house owner.
Okay. Good. 'Cause they were like, city attorneys don't like to touch this little team before.
If this player is shit, you're in the end.
No, and I've already been in touch with Jeff about, um, some of the ins and outs of this. So he's already been helpful to me.
Other questions, Ms. Hilton?
I would be, I stacked advertising request for, for water system ready.
Second. It's been moved by this side and accepted by this completely. Any further discussion? Seeing then, all in favor, please signify by the same.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion passes again, listen.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardway, industrial user survey contract with CH2.
A lot of national pollution, oh, discharge, elimination system, NPDES permit, requires us to do an industrial user survey. Uh, this survey, uh, the purpose of that is to protect the treatment plant from, uh, any discharges that would be damaging to the plant or the health or the environment that would go to the plant. And so what they end up having to do is look at all the, the counties in the city, review, review those. Most of them, they're focusing on industry and commercial. And they look at those and then they, they'll choose which ones they think might be a risky, a risk assessment. And then they'll go visit those and, and take inventory of it, review it visually, and talk with the owners and the runners of the business. And then, uh, if they think they're a risk, or if they are a risk, then they, they'll, they'll have to go through a process. Uh, a lot of times we, they'll have to treat their waste before it goes into our system. So things that they would be looking at would be, uh, possibly the college, one of the chemistry departments and stuff like that. Could be, uh, the industrial parks like, uh, how, on Wood and Drive, uh, when that incubator program is, those things they'll, they would review and see if they're really concerned. But it's mainly to protect the plant and the environment from chemicals that are having spinning into the facility.
Do we currently have any folks that are, are required to do pretreatment?
No.
Okay.
Other questions?
I would move, we approve the contract with CH2 Hill to perform industrial waste survey in amount not exceed $12,480.
Second. It's been moved by this side, accepted by this committee. Any further discussion?
What's our current policy on Uber and this kind of being in our system?
Oh, you mean at the trailer? No, we have no, no restrictions. No restrictions.
And that doesn't affect our location?
Well, if, if, it, it could. If you get a, a, a chemical person that sprays and so forth and would happen to go there, we, you got penalties that are associated if they get caught, but we do not man that station. So there is a risk, but we have experienced it.
You know, we shut it down for a while because of some reason we went over the back.
We, we shut it down in the winter.
Oh, yeah. But we never shut it down for a year in the summer.
No.
Other questions, Ms. Hilton? Seeing then, all in favor, please signify by the same.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion passes again, listen.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardway, Mr. Steller, the United Kingdom presents revitalization of grant.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, this, uh, is basically accepting a grant from the Community Economic Revitalization Board. They're an agency that helps with planning and they also help, uh, with, uh, industrial and, uh, commercial development as well. This was exciting that we were able to get this project in under the wire because at least as it stands now within the existing state budget, the money for, uh, this grant is, uh, being zeroed out after, uh, the, after this by, I mean, this is getting right under the deadline here. Uh, so what this would do is basically a planning study for, uh, the commercial lands, uh, around Lake Large and Myra. But really, the nexus for this is to do, uh, engineering assessment of some of our more problematic intersections such as 12th and Large, Whitman and Large, uh, C and Large. And you have it connected to a planning study. But this is one of the few grant programs, actually, since I've been in the state of Washington, the only grant program, uh, where at least up until now it's been reliably funded and their board voted. and their board voted to give us the full grant award, which is great.
Questions?
Good job.
Mr. Teller, are we going to study alternatives for these intersections that we think are problems?
Uh, yes.
And we determine that all of them are problems?
Well, really the study will determine if in fact it is a problem, this is taking a look at it, and then if so, whether the alternatives to minimizing that risk and making traffic function well.
From, from a personal point of view, I get most of the complaints I've ever got about Twelfth and Large. Yeah, so we don't need the study to determine that, but we need instead of looking at solutions.
Exactly.
And, and funding.
Exactly. And I've successfully used this grant back in Colfax to leverage it to get additional construction funding, so it's all part of the grant ecosystem through Department of Commerce.
That's good.
Other questions?
I'm glad if you were to do that for them, worth fifty thousand dollars. We're going to be looking at the revitalization board for College Place.
One second. Moved by Ms. Snyder, accepted by Ms. Sherman, any further discussion? C, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign sign. Motion to pass it again, listen. Mr. Gordon, conference of plan, appeal.
Yes, we're due for a conference of plan amendment. It's due in June two thousand eighteen, and we advertised for RFP for professional planning services in May and early June, and we received one submission from GR Dorn and Associates. They were the only firm to apply to the deadline, and we've worked with Mr. Dorn in the past. He actually was part of our Phase One of our conference of plan, basically the review of our existing plan and regulations, and also we conducted, I believe it was three days of intense meetings with the key stakeholders, including the university, development representatives, key property owners, and citizens throughout the community. That was a successful process. We're very impressed with his performance through that phase, and so we're recommending that we consult with Mr. Dorn in the amount of, well, his proposal was for ninety-five thousand. We're including a ten percent contingency for any unforeseen aspects of the update that may entail additional studies and work. He has one other associate that works with him. He's got extensive history, work history in the state of Washington, and is very familiar with the Growth Management Act, and we're just pleased to work with him. Mr. Teller worked with him at Colfax on their park plan update and comp plan update, and he was very pleased with that process. So, the recommendation is for, to authorize the administration to enter into a contract with GR Dorn and Associates for professional planning services as outlined in the scope of work dated June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, to include updating the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations in accordance with the provisions of the Washington State Growth Management Act, not to exceed a hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars.
Is this study, this plan, are they, is this an independent appraisal, or does the city have an ability to, while this is a project, to make comments or, or have input in, into the outcome?
It's a public process, so we'll analyze our population trends, our demographics, we'll analyze our available land we have for urban growth, we'll determine if it's appropriate to expand our urban growth area, we'll look at our capacity to serve the community. It's a twenty-year outlook that we're, we're focusing on. There will be public workshops through the Planning Commission, and then through the City Council, so there will be ample, ample opportunity for the public to engage. That's part of the requirement that the Growth Management Act has, is that there's a public participation process. So, yes. Thank you.
Other questions?
What do you think the significant changes would be in the company?
Well, I, I think we've accomplished a lot over the past few years, so we'll be developing, hopefully through the public process, new, new goals and policies. You know, for instance, we've, we've accomplished the College Avenue, part of our existing comp plan. The parks and rec plan that we have is, is not very thorough, so I think we'll have some additional input in that area. We haven't grown a lot, so I don't know if it'll be, you know, justifiable for us to grow our UGA as much.
Yeah, that was part of my question, is are we going to be looking at a better expansion?
Yeah, so part, there's a buildable lands analysis that we've agreed with the county on, and to analyze our, our existing areas where we haven't developed, whether it's infill, and then also our existing UGAs in undeveloped areas, and based on population projections that we'll have, we'll determine whether or not we have enough of that, so.
This might not be entirely related, but since we're mentioning UGAs, I was noticing that, like, Wal Wallace Urban Growth Area at the north is just kind of starting to peak over ours a little bit. I was curious if that's the trend we kind of expect to continue, or if we're going to try to race to the north in order to kind of hit that off?
Well, part of our, our ability to expand follows our service areas, so we don't have, for instance, when you move north, we, we don't have, it's not within our water service area, there's a bunch of smaller water districts up there, and ability to serve with sewer becomes difficult to the north. So there's, there are aspects of that. So I think if, over the next twenty, forty years, yeah, we're likely to see Wal Wallace take in some of that. But also, a lot of it is not very developable in terms of their, their smaller lot sizes already, their half acre, one acre lots, there's not a lot of opportunity for infill or larger developments. So it, we may be asked to serve it someday as those septic systems start to fail, but, you know, we have come to that, so it's not an area that we're focusing on for growth.
After a while, remember back here back years ago, this, the expansion of the city is basically the county is like a zero-sum game, isn't it? In other words, if, if an area is projecting higher, in other words, the, the potential growth area is capped, is that, is that a question? And if, and if a area is seeing, is seeing more population growth than another, that's where they could then have the advantage to expand where another, I mean, the city may not? Is that, in other words, if I remember correctly, it is, it can be capped in a county based on overall population growth, and it's partitioned between the high and the low.
So, the countywide, we've, we've been pretty stagnant in growth, and the county itself does control, they allocate the growth to the incorporated areas, so, but it's been fairly even based on population, they haven't been, you know, got the most, most of the growth in Wal Wallace, but, so, there, yes and no, there's a cap on growth, but, because it's never get, you know.
I expect the council, how the lines get changed, is it by property owner request or by likelihood, or a study that shows?
It's been, I think it's been a mixture in the past, primarily property owner-driven request to, to come into our urban growth area. On occasion, there's the smaller pieces that, you know, get surrounded by larger pieces that want to come in.
Someone have been redraw the lines unless we get some actual requests?
I don't know. The direct, if that, that's a council decision, if you want to be aggressive in certain areas. We, we could request to draw those lines, we could try to go south, we could, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, that's a political decision really. We could also look at existing UGAs and possibly, you know, consider pulling some of those areas out that don't have the, the potential that we once thought they do did for development, or that we can't serve them necessarily economically with water and sewer, and so it's not economically viable for us to keep them there.
But in the previous city, we requested it be included, can they, you know, have a campaign, has anybody asked it to be excluded?
I haven't gotten any requests to be excluded, but as you're aware, we did de-annuation, I think it was last year, and, and as part of that, we, we requested that the property owner sign a no contest agreement, so that we could reallocate that UGA to a different area.
Yeah, that's right.
Other questions for Mr. Gordon?
Motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into a contract with GR Dorn Associates for professional planning services as outlined in the scope of work dated June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, to include updating the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations in accordance with the provisions of the Washington State Growth Management Act, not to exceed a hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars.
Moved by Ms. Cleveland, accepted by Ms. Selby, any further discussion? C, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign sign. Motion to pass it again, listen. I, six point zero three, signed by Mr. Gordon.
Okay, so at the last meeting, I introduced this on, at the thirteenth of June, I was the council, and I went through the entire presentation that was, was done before the Planning Commission at their hearing, and so I, I hope not to have to bore you with that entire presentation again. But the nuts and bolts of it are, yeah, we went through a public process, we had two public workshops with the Planning Commission starting in March, and, and then we held a hearing in, in April, and, excuse me, in, yeah, in April. Yes. When did we hold the hearing? Where is it? In May. We notified one hundred and ten commercial property owners of, of the proposed changes. We had one public comment from, from the owner of Andy's, had mainly questions. The, the purpose of this is to, is to protect the public health essentially, and that was the driving factor with the newly designed College Avenue. We're seeing increasing sand sports signs, and we want to protect the aesthetic aspect of it, that was the other aspect, with the decorative streetlights and trees that we had in place. So we made some reasonable proposals, staff did, yeah, so we have a twenty-five percent signed to wall ratio for your signings along College Avenue, as well as in the general commercial districts. We proposed a, the proposal has a twenty foot, twenty foot maximum height for pole signage along College Avenue in the general commercial zone, that, that height stays for pole signs to the height of the zone, which is fifty feet. I mean, are there any questions? I can go into greater detail if we need to, or?
Got a lot of questions. Of course, it's our job to really vet this pretty carefully, right? After reading it very carefully, you know, I'm looking maybe some house cleaning things that we could touch up the language a little bit. One is, and under definitions, S one, you mentioned about six months prior, and you, and then later you also prohibited, you include six months, I think.
What page are you on, under the definition section?
Yeah, maybe it's grand openings, one month, then, then one month afterwards.
Okay, okay, under the temporary signs?
Yeah, then seventeen forty zero eight, you include both before and after. So anyway.
It says one month prior to?
Yeah. Just curious about when they have to take a sign down. I think in, in another place, you allow for a month after the opening, they, they've got time to take it down, it doesn't have to be taken down immediately. I just was curious if you want to allow for that. And the safer five, number five, under, under S definitions, you have yard signs within two hours of the end of the sale, is it, is that really what we want? Because yard sales can, like...
That's the problem, is that they, they continue to either go on indefinitely, or if they aren't taken down directly that same day, they often are forgot about by the owners of the signs that put them up, and then they end up being up for, well, I had an example, I think one had been up for three or four months, so. And that was the desire of the Planning Commission, that was their recommendation.
Okay, and then under seventeen forty zero thirty, C, says all signs show up permits. Is this just for new construction, new signs, or you require that for pre-existing signs? How do you?
Any new signs that goes up would need to have a permit. All new signs is currently required to permit.
Okay, so.
It's not new.
Old, old signs, you don't have to worry?
No, no.
I, I was thinking on seventeen forty zero thirty on F, we should include some kind of wording that, some kind of prompt response time should be provided, because a lot of times, we're busy, they're busy, deadlines come and go, and questions, we don't get to in time. Any one objective, we, we add some wording there? Communications should be prompted and responded to.
What are you looking at?
Uh, looking at the, the general seventeen forty zero thirty.
Yeah, and there. F.
Applications are, can be time sensitive, I mean, people can get busy, and we can get busy and not respond to questions, they may give us some deadlines to come and go for the application, so I'm just curious if, it says that, that may be happening.
We, we don't have any provisions under our building codes that require a response time, and I would think that would be appropriate to, to specify that in this particular section. If we want to have a response time, probably would be more appropriate under title fifteen to, for regarding all permits, to have a response time would be my recommendation for that. But in general, when we have any application that we get in, it's state stamped, and we, our general turnaround time is, for permits like this, is about two weeks. Depending on the complexity of it, it may, may run longer than that.
Under the same general, seventeen forty zero thirty on K, I mean, on five, I was wondering if we need to have a, a new line there that deals with special situations that we don't anticipate. For instance, if we expand sidewalks, expand roads, enforce alterations of signs on businesses, if we, if we might allow them special, random, special situations about where they can replace their signs to, how much time they have to replace their signs.
We, we have, sorry.
Because my understanding is if we move in and force their signs out, they have to abide by the new ordinance, is that right?
It's a grandfathering provision, so there are a number of signs in College, on, on College Avenue in particular, that may, like Andy's, you can take Andy's sign. The pole itself is within its own property, but the sign overhangs are right away. The pole itself is within its own property, but the sign overhangs are right of way. So we, there, we, in the code, it treats that as a legal non-conforming, they're allowed to maintain it, improve it, you know, then in the event that it was destroyed, then that, say, say if somebody ran into it and knocked it down, the new sign would have to be located in such a way that it did not overhang into our right of way. Now, in terms of our citywide projects, for instance, along College Avenue, we did acquire a sign from Ben's Beeline, we purchased the sign as a part of that process, we paid $27,000 for it, and then we also purchased the ground for right of way at the intersection where the sign was, we paid another couple thousand dollars for that. So there, that right of way acquisition process, which was done by a third party, took into account the value of that sign and the property was paid for that, so.
Yeah, and my question is, on replacing this sign, it may be a special situation where it approaches into property they need for other purposes, and so can they be granted an exception on the angle?
We don't want to get into that.
The distance, or anything from the sidewalk? And also with overhangs, is it on the 10-foot sidewalks, or the outer five feet, or the inner five feet, or however?
It's our right of way, wherever the right of way line falls, any, along College Avenue, the back of that 10-foot sidewalk is, is where our right of way ends.
So even, even though there's five feet clear, we still don't want anything?
That was the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
I'm just curious, I, I drove around today and looked at situations where they're going to be required to change them.
Um, they would be considered grandfathered in, and we would allow them to maintain them.
Until they have to.
So.
Um, just to back up a minute, I would not be in favor of adding into any of our ordinances a response deadline. That should be an executive policy, and I think that's too low of a detail for council to be. And given our staffing at this point, I think it doesn't make sense for us to put that into ordinances.
I'm just curious if, if, see Dan, can you get any comments regarding the, the, the two, two, two minutes?
Yes. Sorry about me playing the pop on my bike and tire as quick as I could today. I'm with the Beeline Auto Center in College Place, and my parents have been here as merchants since 1958. I've owned a commercial contracting company, a large company in Portland, and have interfaced with sign ordinances and policies at various cities throughout the Northwest Region, four state area, from Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, to small burgs like the one I grew up in right here. And I know that the, the sign ordinance that City College Place has had has been very lenient, to say the least. But my observation of the, of the plan, comparing it to other municipalities, especially of this size, but of larger sizes too, the, the public input is on this change, which is pretty radical from what you had, was amazingly short in comparison. I think there was a one public hearing in May, which I tried to get it for, but I got here an hour late, and everybody was gone. I think David Gordon was the only one that showed up, so there wasn't a lot of public input on it. And for something that's going to affect, you don't want to change a sign policy every, you know, four, five years. My perspective is College Place has gone from one end to the other. In other words, if you look at the varying criteria that are the key things for commercial businesses, it would rank with Lake Oswego or Beaverton as far as being very stringent. And I know that that may be desirable in a lot of ways, but in other words, what the recent development on south, on the south side of town here a few years ago with the Walmart, so forth, several of those signs would not be in compliance with this sign. So in the future, if you had developers come in here, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty aggressive. The other thing I would say is that sign ordinances are far-reaching, long-term decisions, and I, I personally think that the window of time that the merchants in town, and it was a very small window. I tried to be responsive, and I missed it. But, anyway, that's my two bits worth, and I, of course, have concerns for our sign at Beeline, because we, we, we sold that property with a very clear understanding that we would have that sign available to replace. We had one, we would never have sold the property for $20,000 if we were giving up our sign rights, have the sign, obviously, because our, I think our budget, which is a little tight, is about $35,000 to replace the sign. So in talking with Morgan Bishop from Epic Solutions, who is a third party of the City College Place hired to do the purchasing for the cars project, which is a great guy to work with, by the way, he confirmed my, my assumptions that the sign was available for us to use, and he chubbed his ass down, which is why we were the ones required to remove the sign. So that's a concern. The other concern is that we do want to be able to, being very familiar with the grandfather clauses, the fact that we removed our sign to accommodate the city, city street project, and waited better part of two years than everybody's been torn up a year along with everybody else, we kind of muddled away through that. Project completed late last fall, so we're in the process of trying to get this sign reinstalled. And now we're confronted with a situation because of this narrow window of time, where we've been here since the 50s, and somehow we're coming up on a couple, two, three days here where we've got a window to get all this stuff put together to meet this deadline or fall within some new sign guideline. And so I'm a little concerned that we, in fact, are provided that grandfathering of placement, size, and so on and so forth, and that would be my concern. And I would prefer going a, the path of least resistance for everyone's happiness.
John, is this sign grandfathered in or can the replacement, does the other one apply that number?
Um, our interpretation of the way the grandfathering laws work, and looking at the right of way acquisitions, that we purchased the sign for that $20,000 roughly, and then we purchased the right of way for an additional amount of money. Mr. Ward did retain the actual sign, and in terms of grandfathering, if, if he were to apply for a permit that included the, the structural drawings and the engineering that was required to redirect that sign, construction drawings, and if it was applied for, basically by, if this is enacted tonight, the, the effective date would be Monday, so if he got his application in this Friday before 4:00 p.m., then he would be vested under the existing height of 50 feet. We did receive an application from Mr. Ward on, on the 16th of this month. It was, I responded to Mr. Ward through an email stating that was an incomplete application because it did not include any, any construction drawings or engineering, or renderings. We did receive a $50 site plan fee. So at this point, until we receive the engineering and construction drawings, it's an incomplete application.
So wouldn't be, so the grandfathering has nothing to do with it?
Under, under the interpretations that I have of grandfathering laws and how they're effective, in, in talking with the city administrator, there, yeah, there's nothing.
Because we purchased it, someone's gone down and they've replaced it, we need something new.
Right.
So I, I guess I'm not, I'm kind of, well, just one little, you know, my concern observing many other city ordinances with sign orders is doing business under, because that's what our business was. We submitted our sign last month, I had two, three days in order to catch up with John, to have a talk with him and kind of discuss what our plans were, and then I went back, and that was the last month, we submitted our, the one-page permit form with the attached drawings. Problem is, is when you're fighting such a small window, you've got to get structural drawings. In our general contractors office, Siebel, we used their references of the local engineering firm here, they don't do that type of thing, we're privileged to spoke camp, they're four to six weeks out, therefore, we're caught in a situation where, and I think I sent an email to John today, because I mean, we're trying to comply and be good stewards and neighbors and so forth, but it's a little bit crazy when you've had decades and decades of time, and then you've got this window of 30 to 45 days, and just because we were the unfortunate people in that corner to sell the property for, for a sign for this project, and then we don't have the time to reconstruct it before new sign permit ordinances come in that are extremely restrictive and would otherwise be grandfathered in. And my experience is that if we were to, as a retail business, that's a landmark, that property is a landmark, and I don't know, John, I don't know, did you get my email today? It was self-explanatory, and a landmark, and, and, you know, that, that, that sign and that landmark, we don't get any more requests. My parents got old, the property's been 20 years of deferred maintenance, we're in the process of cleaning that property up, which got put on hold because of this street project. And we're, we're trying to do the right things here, but we didn't have any intention of waiving our rights to have a sign under this window of time that just happened to stars me in the right alignment for this.
So, so just to wrap this up, can, can you get an extension on the application?
If you enact this ordinance tonight, it will take effect on Monday, and if I do not have a complete application by Friday, I, I cannot, I can't treat his application any different than any other applicant out there, so.
Is there, is there any burden on, on adopting the ordinance? Would you, would you object to postponing this?
I don't think that's my call, honestly.
What's, why are you, you're wanting to put the sign up in the exact same place, the exact same sign? I'm not sure if it's all kind of a, a new sign or new construction, how does it not, how do you know it doesn't fit in the news?
The difference is the height.
Well, it's the same height.
The new ordinance, no, I mean, in terms of what the new code is and the existing code that we're operating in right now, the existing, you can go 50 feet.
And we never would have agreed to sign the property in the signway for $20,000 to basically waive our sign, our rights, and, you know, would that...
What I hear you saying is that the city, new city ordinance, ordinance would require you to have mechanical writing engineering?
No.
Plans, physical design?
Well, we'd have to do that anyway.
Yeah, sure.
And you don't have time to do it?
No, because I've been trying for, ever since I got here an hour late, the last once meeting, and so I was all over with, but I've been trying to get a structural engineer since then. I finally found one last, week before last, but we're 40, 45 days out to be able to get structural drawings. So we're, if you don't fall to bars, my thinking is, is that the whole thing should be grandfathered in, and it shouldn't, doesn't need to get in the way of the, in the sign court, or that's my thought.
Who says that it can't be? Mr. Lee?
Uh, I'm wondering, like, what would be a reasonable window here? I, I'm hearing your stress here.
Yeah.
I'm hearing a lot of pressure to get all this stuff done, and I don't disagree that this is, this has been accelerated in your perspective.
I guess so.
So I'm wondering, like, what would be...
We didn't foresee, it just went, we didn't foresee when we entered into this process that about, within two or three months of workable weather, after the project was completed, the city was going to turn around and change the sign ordinance. We had no idea of that.
How much time do you need?
Uh, 60 days max.
60 days?
Max, for all the structural drawings, everything's going to be, yeah.
Mr. Paul? When these ordinances put together, were there any community interventions, anybody as part of the group that was talking about?
We have, the, the two, the two workshops that we held, the first one is in March, was advertised in, in the U B as a workshop for discussion for assignment, as well as the second one in April. In between those two meetings, I was in contact with Mr. Ward on April 28th, I have a phone log that informing him of the, the pending changes. And at that point, is when we began discussions, and Mr. Ward brought up the grandfathering clause, and I, I established our position that, no, the sign is not up and doesn't qualify as grandfathering.
Well, I'd like to make, I'd like to make, make a motion to postpone this ordinance for 90 days. Say it.
It's good, move. And secondly, we agree with the discussion. Mr. Paul?
If it's possible, maybe give me a set of meetings gathered consisting of council members, some of our staff, we've seen the local, which was going to be affected by this to...
Do you want, do you want to go back through the public process again?
I'm just wondering if, uh...
I think he's talking about filtering through council committee.
Yeah.
That's your decision. You want to do that?
The city has a...
It seems to me we have concerns about the ordinance, which I think Councilman Peterson does, or Dickerson, I'm sorry, I can't read people, that the appropriate thing to do is to send our concerns back to the planning commissions to, because they're the ones that are the standing committee to deal with this issue.
The planning commission makes a recommendation to the council, and they've done their recommendation.
But I, but I think, I'm not sure that they have the benefit of some of these questions that have been raised.
It, it enters a different level when it gets to the council, and so we've got concerns that are not their concerns.
The, the process, the process that we've gone through and the way our ordinance is laid out is the planning commission holds workshops, conducts public hearings, and that recommendation, which is before you, is for either approval, denial, or remand back to the planning commission. That would be the process to work through.
I personally think there are a lot of good things in that ordinance, but I saw there were some other issues that I haven't been totally, what did I say? There were some things with verbiage that came up, some issue with timing.
This goes back to what I originally said. Looking at 43 years of this kind of thing with any number of municipalities, city, county, state, the window that has been utilized here is amazingly small. Now, John just mentioned it, he mentioned to me way back in April, well, that sounds like a long time, but let me break it to you. If you need structural drawings, you're going to wait a month or two before you, before they can get started on them right now because of what's going on. In other words, in a situation such as ours, you don't just get the money out of the air and make the budgets, do all these things. We're not a public entity, in other words, we have to make those plans, and whether it was March or April, and then to be ended by June, that's a very, very small window to ask, to reasonably ask a business to come up with and make a major capital investment on their property and still be compliant with the city. Most cities go through this for several months, several months. Most cities go through this for several months, several months.
There's a motion on the floor. To postpone for 90 days, it's been set for five minutes. Any comments? We're in the discussion. See, I mean, all of the...
I need...
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay. I, I just, I do need...
There's a motion on the floor.
So we're still discussing, can we hear like...
Well, it's...
Aren't we? A motion in a second.
I have a staff member who's deciding the sort of stuff.
I just raise a hand. I apologize.
What would you like to say?
I, I would just like to reiterate that I do need direction, I mean, other than just a postponement. So, so for this, okay, thank you.
We have a motion to postpone for at least 90 days. We're in the discussion. All the favor, you see the file, I say aye.
Aye.
I will listen, son.
Aye.
So, make sure when the cell is decided to oppose, it's, it's Bob, Peterson, Peterson's clearly approved, where she passes for three. Now. Mr. Moore?
Thanks for providing me with some direction on how to proceed. My, my, I guess my recommendation would be at this point would be to, if there's concerns, to identify those concerns and then remand it back to the planning commission for further analysis. And I gather we would conduct another public hearing.
You know, what's interesting is, it could be a restrictive plan as well, and I don't know, but my personal thought on this is that this, I wouldn't call this a legacy item, the sign, but for many of us that have been in this town, that is, that is an important sign in the city. And it almost, I understand what it's going to discuss. It really feels almost like a grandfathered issue of sorts, and there were construction, and that's why the sign came down. I thought it would ever come down without that. I don't know. So, you know, I'm not sure. It's like to make a motion that if 90 days will give the parties enough time to figure this out, if not, that may be, you know, the way it's going to be. But then I guess the question is, well, there needs to be a motion here, whether the council wants to set up a committee to clearly review this ordinance. And so we have to, I guess my point is, is this a one-off legacy item, or is there, or is there an issue with this policy in general, this ordinance in general?
Part of the technical solution here and alternative is, if Jerry wants to send a committee, he can make a motion to send a committee, to create a committee.
Mr. Jerry? Um, based on the detailed questions that I heard, I would move that it be remanded back, that this ordinance be remanded back to the planning commission with a request that all council members provide a list of their concerns to the planning commission within one week.
Oh, I'm sorry, can that, and would have a commission? It's possible to set up a joint meeting between, between councils and commissioners. I would recommend you that.
Do you accept that?
I, I would rather not have a required meeting between council and, and planning commission. Is it against protocol for a council member to go to a commission meeting and speak as a member of the public?
Only if they comment there and then vote on it. I've asked that same question to him, and I see the answer, you actually can't agree.
Yeah, so I think, I would rather just remand it back with us providing any inputs that we had within the next three quarters. There's no... Well, we would provide it each individually. We wouldn't email everybody because that would be illegal under the open meetings act. Okay. But I think it's totally fine for each of us to email. It is recommended for a perception, perspective, that council members not attend the committee meetings, just so that there's not a different perspective or different influence. You're supposed to hear the presentation from the planning commission as it is presented to the entire council, not necessarily, it's, it's just recommended from a city clerk perspective and for the perception of fairness to the public, that that not be done.
I don't see any advantage of council members attending and just listening to that comment or input at a planning commission meeting. The council really needs to have their own subcommittee, that council committee that makes another second committee, so that's, that's one of the...
What I would like to see is a subcommittee of representatives from the council, representatives from the staff, representatives from the community, sit down and look at this ordinance and say, what are the real issues? And make some recommendations to possibly tweak it a little bit, and then present it back to the council.
The planning commission is set up as a subcommittee for items like this, for zoning related topics. They're familiar with state law and GMA and are familiar with reviewing other jurisdictions' codes. I, I do like council and Selby's, council and Selby's, excuse me, idea of council providing either maybe the planning commission or just staff a list of the items that you see as concerns, and then we can, I can take those forward to the planning commission, and we can revise as needed.
I think that's the thing to do, is send it back to the planning commission, bring it back, and let us look at it for a while, and see if we need any further recommendations or modifications or items that haven't been, you know, concerns to us over several months.
The code also, if I can interject, the code also, I mean, it does, it does, those are options according to our municipal code in terms of you either approve, deny, or remand it back to the planning commission.
Or modify.
Or modify at the meeting.
And that's what Jerry's concerned with, is modifications.
Yeah, and you could make those modifications tonight if you saw fit. You can, please, we could.
So there's still an open, there's still an open motion, but we sell you to remand this back to the commission. It's the second...
I already said...
Well, you seconded it with the...
Over.
With the qualifier. Oh, I just said I wanted to add a comment. Okay. This is the movement, second, and we're in the discussion. All the favor, you see the file, I say aye.
Aye.
I will listen, son. Where she has, normally, it's remanded back to the board? We have the industry of the board, it's Mr. Sappeloff.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Mayor. This is in the Board docs website. I'm also holding it up. This is the semi-final iteration of what the students at College Place High School came up with, with the city logo. So if you have any comments for us, please let us know. We're also going to put it on the website for public input as well. So I just wanted to put that out there and see if anyone had any comments, but it's still going on the website for public input.
Would be possible to rotate that. Thank you.
You know, I really like the logo, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. After seeing it a few times, reflecting on it, I just have some concerns that it's just really busy. It's kind of overly complicated. I spent a little bit of time kind of looking at some other logos online that other cities have. A lot of them are pretty minimalistic. And, you know, when you look at something like, say, a seal, kind of like, you know, as we have it now, something that's, you know, two colors, white and green up there, I'm just wondering how well would this translate to a lot of the different applications? So I'm wondering if what we need is really something boiled down, because, I mean, there's so much detail in it, and I do like that. But there's just so much detail, it's simply not going to be visible on, you know, smaller seals. I wonder if maybe this semi-final iteration could be put on one of those banners, create a banner, and have maybe a yearly thing where we have the College Place High School students, they make something. But I wonder if, and I'm just thinking, I think it aloud here, is if we need something that is a little bit more simplistic, a little bit more straightforward. Any other council members have any thoughts on this?
Mr. Moore? I agree with you. As I look at it, I've never really analyzed it from an artistic point of view, but the artist and pictures often deal in principle of threes, and that middle section on the left could actually be replaced with a, a, a more landscape. And then that piece of music, the cell unit, you show.
I like your idea of putting them on banners, because my other comment was going to be, the one thing I don't like about it is it doesn't give any credit to the students. So, you know, I kind of like it developed by, but for a working logo, you usually want something that can be reproduced in black and white. And I don't think this would work very well in black and white for all the reasons that council members think are just stated. So that would be my main concern about the logo itself.
When we talk about making it simpler, which I agree, I still really like the, the new patch that we did for the police department, where it's just the, the water tower, because that really gives us, with mountains in the background, which is us, this one kind of gives the impression that we have more buildings than we actually do. And so I guess I kind of like the more, like, we live in Podunk, so we should advertise that a little bit. But, but I do like the simplicity. Obviously, there's some specific police, the blue stripe, and that could have been built, but that simplicity, because the other...
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I can agree too. It seems like the key elements are the water tower, the ramp posts, looks like the illustrative building of the university, and I'm not sure of the other, and possibly a tree, but we can hang those on to see if they can block those key elements in, in the, as Selby says, something can be reproduced in black and white. It seems like our street map, that, that seems to be something that's new and that represents the city. Of course, the water tower, I've really been looking for that, it's a new one. The concept is going to be, that's our opinion.
Okay. We're in the discussion.
Just one other comment is that, you know, looking at some of the other cities' designs, I think is really, might be a good source to examine for not only inspiration, but new ideas.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Ward, you're understanding this?
I'm told we look like brothers, so I think we're pretty all right. Okay, I'll make this brief. This is a preview, something we'd like to bring to you next council meeting. These are engineering construction standards and specific standards and specifications. This is actually a pretty exciting night for me, and I think it's very brief, but about every year for 10 years now, I've been trying to get something done in terms of our standards. I'm supposed to promulgate those, you're supposed to approve them. Last time they were done was five years before, even right on the scene, so we've been working off of some fairly, I shouldn't say outdated standards, because we've, we've addressed those as we've gone along, we've modified them. So what you'll see in front of you, what you got on your packets, there's something that looks like this. There's two parts, actually three parts to what you got. The first part of the specifications, which write out exactly what we require in our projects. Second part of the standard drawings. And I apologize for not being able to read these. We can only put them on 11 by 17, so you may need to use a magnifying glass.
We have a plus button on it.
Yeah. And the final part is stormwater standards that we're using. We've been using these in regular practice for the last few years. So this isn't a change or anything. But what I have done is I've tried to point out, you'll see a column there, if you can read it, with the magnifying glass, called tech policy slash policy. What I've tried to do is pull out any of the items that might have some slight policy nexus. As you go back there in, you may not be able to see it, but typically if something costs more, costs less for developer, I try to flag it. For example, we had a situation where we had a developer who did not want to put in catch basins, because it costs too much. They wanted to do surface blow for a longer area. We allowed them to do that, but the problem is, it's very sensitive to surface elevations, and you can get puddling of water right at your A D ramp, ADA ramps, if you don't do it right, which happened. So there's some things that we could do to help make things cheaper, but typically we find that we'd be at that fire. So I've, I've listed those, and in some cases, there's stuff in our code, and that's been kind of the difficulties, our standards and the code work together. And we've been trying to orchestrate all that, or decided it's just for now, the standards we're using, we'd like to promulgate those before you, let's take a look at those. If there are concerns, let us know, otherwise I'd like to see you consider adopting them at the next meeting. So if there are questions, be sure to give them to us and let us know. We'd love to hear those and see, get your feedback.
Looks like a lot of hard work.
I do need to point to Mr. Hardwick. He's been a key part of updating our standards. Every time I have something that I want to make sure works, I go to Paul, and so I think he's just a lot of credit for this.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? Now, Mr. Moore, lines of proposal.
Well, this is, this is rather brief. Back in 2013, when we adopted our hearing examiner system, we failed to, to update our PUD ordinance to which guides how we process applications for PUDs. We did cover it under the title two, that talks about the hearing examiner authorities. It directs the hearing examiner to conduct public hearings for PUDs, but in title 17, that was not addressed. It still talks about the planning commission. So in the event I were to receive an application for a PUD today, I would not be able to process it because of the conflict. So we're working with Greg Gornan Associates on providing a procedural update to the PUD ordinance. It will do some, there will be some streamlining of it. It's a pretty rough draft that I gave, got you guys in the packet, but we plan to make it simpler to use for the applicants. And we hope to hold a public hearing until I 11th meeting with action about it as well. Any questions?
Mr. Moore? Mr. Sappeloff?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, city council directed us to contract with Mr. Lawsonite to help us do a strategic plan, identify the vision, the values, and what we're striving toward in the future. And this document is a culmination of all of that. So we just put this here tonight on the agenda under administrative reports for general comments, and we'll be putting this on the public website for public comments for the next month.
The attention Supreme Staff to the office.
Mike, how's it going so far? Mike, how's it going so far? Is it, your interaction with the company, or which overall appraisal of...
Oh, of what?
Of the contractor that we hired who...
Oh, with Lawsonite.
Yeah.
Oh, in my opinion, he's been doing a great job on this, in identifying a lot of the concerns, goals, things that people and citizens really want to see for the future.
Good to hear, thank you.
Yep.
I think we met with Lawson three times since the last time this was used to kind of flesh out the timeline and how it works. Questions for Mr. Ward?
It's tired.
Yeah, well, it's operating. As for the regional reports, if you have any questions on this? Any general intensive discussion from the board?
I've written, it's actually a song, but it's a poem. July 4th is our birthday. Happy birthday, America, happy birthday to you. Sweet land of freedom, the red, white, and blue. To God and country, allegiance is true. Happy birthday, America, happy birthday to you. Fly your flag and thank the red and white.
Very good.